Mr. Fries, are you good? Cops is here, we'll start. Officer Cops, excuse me. I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting for the Miami'sburg City Schools dated Thursday, April 21st, 2022. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, next on the agenda is roll call.
Mr. Amesler?
Here.
Mr. Daffler?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. S. Mr. Todevine?
Present.
Mr. Blosson?
Present.
I'm here.
Here.
Next on tonight's agenda is the adoptin- adoption of the uh, tonight's agenda. May I have a motion for tonight's agenda?
A move that we adopt the agenda dated April 21st, 2022.
Motion by Mr. Todevine and seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Here, oh, yes, excuse me.
Mr. Todevine?
Yes.
Mr. Amesler?
Yes. Next is the approval of minutes. This is for the approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held on March 17th, 2022. May I have a motion for those minutes?
A move for the approval of the minutes of minutes from the board meeting, March 17th, 2022.
Motion by Mr. Lewis and seconded by Mr. Daffler, I believe.
Yes.
Any questions or comments in regards to those minutes as well? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Todevine?
Yes.
Mr. Amesler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is approval of the financial report, March 31st, uh, 2022. May I have a motion for tonight's uh, financial report?
I move for the approval of the March 31st, 2022 financial report.
Motion by Mr. Todevine?
Second.
Second by Mr. Daffler.
I like the way he respectful to his elders.
The lights just dimmed and went back up, right? It wasn't just me.
So I would like to take a moment right now to just discuss what we are financially doing to actually uh, receive a little bit uh, more funding in terms of timing that was expected through the Fair School Funding Plan. We do expect that to level out because the state has told us what we're going to get. Essentially, the only thing that would cause any deviation would be students coming in and going out uh, before the end of the year. Uh, I did want to take this time uh, to give an update on the finances of the district, so this will be on my behalf presentation.
Mr. Esp- pushing your microphone.
I can talk louder, okay? So, uh, just wanted to give a financial update uh, on where we are. And uh, obviously, next month, I'm going to be giving a five-year forecast presentation. What's, what I've done the past month, the past six weeks, has been do updates with uh, staff virtually. We did three Zoom meetings. I've been out to several of the schools um, to present and, and ask, uh, answer questions, take questions, and just be candid about where we are. Um, one of the, basically, this is part of the presentation that the, the schools have seen. I did um, reiterate that the general fund is what we're doing the five-year forecast on. That's typically what we call the Board's Fund as well, because it's the largest fund, and that's the, the fund that you guys are, are really, you know, taking votes on and making decisions with. Uh, also, the permanent improvement fund is, is one of the other larger funds that we deal with. This is where we see a lot of the, the large um, big-ticket items um, in terms of improvements to buildings. Um, I wanted to talk about exactly what can be spent out of PI. Uh, that's typically furniture, roofing, abatement, and then new things, um, new large capital expenses like buses. In terms of our PI, we have a PI levy that generates funds that put money into that fund. Uh, it's part of property taxes that are levied. But I did want to talk specifically about what those PI items are, espe- especially since as we talk about some of the the belt tightening that we've had to do from a financial standpoint, that we understand that the PI funds have to be spent for specifically uh, PI items. I also wanted to discuss the ESER funds and coronavirus relief funds. The district received 14.49 million um, or has been allocated, I should say. We haven't received all of that just yet, but we've been allocated that much in the uh, 507 Fund, which is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, as well as a coronavirus relief fund. And I wanted to kind of frame that, because I know that when we talk about that, that large of, of an allocation of funds, it's important to know and to put it into perspective. And so, when we look at our fiscal year 22, we have 54.54 million expected in expenditures out of the general fund. And if we take that 14.49 million and we divide it by the total expenditures projected for this year, we're somewhere around 26.5% of our expenditures. And the, the point that I'm making here is that when we are kind of injected with these funds that are one-time funds, it tends to um, muddy the waters in terms of trends. And when these funds are expended, we're going to go back to our regular expenditure rates. And so, we're going to start to see those trends take, take effect. When we look at um, some of the projected efficiencies that we've talked about here with the board and presented um, throughout the district is we're looking at retirements and resignations as one of the primary uh, forms of, of reducing costs. And the reason that that's the case is because our expenditures are 87% salaries and benefits. So if you think about the bulk of where we're, where we're spending our funds, it's salaries and benefits. So, looking at those and trying to find ways to be more efficient is kind of what we've been doing as a, as a cabinet and also um, you know, having those, those difficult discussions here, um, you know, with the board as well. I should, it should be noted right now, it's, it's only retirements and resignations, so no kind of reductions in force planned um, currently. The data that's leading this is as we look at the, the blue line, that's our staffing um, since 2014, and the orange is our enrollment. So we can see that our, our staffing is reacting to our enrollment, but there's still a gap. Uh, and as we, as we start to go through some of these efficiencies, we would like to see that gap uh, close just a bit. This is unfortunately what um, the, the, the color scheme is, is representing in terms of our forecast. And it's important to understand that from a forecast standpoint, we're looking at how quickly our expenses are overtaking our revenues, not just the bottom line uh, balances each year. The orange shade right there is fiscal caution. The um, the pink is going to be fiscal warning, and the red is fiscal emergency. Um, so it's, it's important to kind of keep that frame, uh, frame of mind when we're talking about where we're heading with our current trends. I also wanted to talk about ODE similar districts. So ODE actually creates a list of similar districts, and it goes up to 20, but I use the top five here. And those are North Olmsted City, Northmont Delaware, Troy, and Finley. And the way that they come up with naming these as similar districts are enrollment, uh, population density. It talks about also percentage of economic disadvantage, uh, percentage of minorities in the school district, and median gross adjusted income. And as we look at that, we can see the blue here is representing our five similar districts. And as we look at this, we can see that our enrollment trend is not different from those similar districts. While we have more uh, students than, than the other five in similar districts, the trend that you can see follows um, the, the, those similar districts. Same concept here, as we look at expenditures, um, I will say that we start to, when we get to fiscal year 23, we start to overtake the trend, but I also want to point out fiscal year 20. So you can see from 18 and 19, we were really um, starting to creep up to 2020 where we were right at the line of our similar districts, the top end. Uh, but then you can see that our trend, as our ESER dollars start to erode away and we start using the general fund, you know, we start to overtake what um, the expenditures of, of our like districts. When we look at per pupil expenditures, this is a driver of the last slide. So the per pupil expenditures, if those grow per, per student, then our total expenditures are going to grow, and that's kind of what we're seeing here. This is a, a really good way of seeing the per pupil expenditures and how they work with um, the ESER dollars coming in. So the blue line is showing in 2020, we were um, you know, very similar to our, to um, other districts. And then we start dropping really low, and then we come up and we spike in 24 because the ESER dollars have run out at that point. And then we start to, to um, level back out. These are percentage changes. Wanted to also talk about the changes with the Fair School Funding Plan. If we look between fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22, we see that our, our total revenue coming in has dropped. But we see that the green is larger, and the green is representing our restricted uh, monies. And that is by way of success and wellness. So the state has said we have to spend um, a larger amount of money on success and wellness. And so, it's not only a reduction in revenue, but it's also an increase in restricting that, that revenue that we are getting. The next slide, I think, though, actually takes everything into account, because if you remember with the Fair School Funding Plan, it's not only the fact that we get uh, less revenue, we have also less expenses. So it's important to put this into perspective. The first, uh, the far left actually shows it the best. When you see the 719,0087, that's the le- the uh, reduction in revenue that we get, but we had a reduction of expenditures of 1.9 million. So that, that is a net gain for the district of 1.249 million, and that's represented in the gray. And then you can see the changes that happen, and those are typically just happen, happening as we go out due to changes in enrollment. Uh, I also want to take a moment to talk about the performance index. This is something that we, we look at uh, with the state report card. And with the state report card, uh, basically looking for each student to see if they're proficient. Um, and it's weighted this way, so we see achievement, progress, graduation rate, gap closing, uh, improving at-risk K3 readers, and preparing for success. This is what our performance index looked at, uh, looked like in 2019 for the district. We were above average. The average in the county was 82.59. When we look at 2021, the average dropped to 70.81. This is primarily due to the coronavirus pandemic that, that, that was um, you know, affected everyone. Uh, but as we see that, that average drop, uh, we're still above average. If you stack those next to each other, you can see that we actually are more above average in 2021 than we were in 2019. I think that that's a, a really good indicator to take a look at for the, for the educational health of the, of the district. This is another way of looking at it, too. The, the Y-axis is going to be the PI score, and the X-axis is going to be the per pupil expenditures. And so, when we look at this and we actually look at just Miami'sburg, we see that Miami'sburg um, falls into a category where only two districts spend less and achieve more. Um, and one district that's off to the far right is spending somewhere around $7,000 more than us and achieving almost 10 points less. So I think that that's a pretty interesting um, data point to, to, to bring up. Um, savings measures, as we talk about the financial um, you know, constrictions that we have and constraints and capacity that we have to live in, what the district is doing right now is uh, looking at, at writing grants. So one of the grants was uh, the ability for us to purchase four buses for the price of two. That contract will be on the agenda a little bit later. The Emergency Connectivity Grant, where we were able to bring in 1,700 Chromebooks at zero cost to the taxpayers. Also evaluating future contracts. You'll notice there are a couple contracts this evening that are long-term because we're able to save and, and insulate ourselves from the inflation that we're seeing uh, in, in a, in a lot of different services and supplies. Also, capital planning, um, uh, Mr. Homan and I have been working on capital planning um, in, in terms of permanent improvement to make sure we're planning for the large expenditures coming up, and then also just evaluating the staffing levels that we just talked about. Also, we're, again, we're posting all of our data on Ohio Online Checkbook, so any, any member of the community can go out and take a look at that. Uh, the district received the Auditor of State with Distinction Award, which is only um, earned by 4% of school districts. And then, we actually closed on a bond earlier this month where we're able to save an entire year off the repayment of the bond. Um, and we were able to lower the interest rate. So, that's the uh, financial presentation as of now. I'll have more about um, the forecast uh, next month, but I wanted to go ahead and, and brief you on that tonight.
No, John, thanks a lot, because I, what, what you've done took a lot of time and a lot of effort, and um, it means a lot for the future of our district to know where we're going, and um, you've been a, so far, a very good captain of the ship as far as the finances, and um, I, I would like to just publicly thank you for that, for keeping us so informed um, about, you know, what, what to expect. You know, it, it's not good to have surprises, and uh, one thing that we talked about and uh, a while back, and that's the, the cost of health insurance. Because of COVID, um, we don't know what to expect for health insurance. It could go up 50%. I mean, we, there's no way to predict that right now because of, of the, what, what insurance companies. They have the capability of, of doing a lot of damage to, to uh, business people as well as school districts and stuff, so. You know, that's, I'm, I'm just putting that out there for, for people to understand in the future. Even five years from now, we're still going to be living from uh, the effects of what's went on the last couple, two or three years, so. The, that, that forecast is most impossible to do, but thanks for a lot of hard work you've done.
Yeah, and we are a part of a consortium, too, for healthcare, so that does help flatten the, the costs. I mean, we, even within a consor- consortium, though, there have di- been districts that have gotten increases that are in the 20% sta- you know, 20% range. Uh, so we're obviously not, we're hoping that that's not us, but it is one of the most volatile line items when we look at the forecast, and it's the second-largest expenditure that we have, so.
Mr. Corey Daffler or Lister Lewis, anything for John? Nothing? Hearing none, um, may we have a roll call?
Mr. Todevine?
Yes.
Mr. Amesler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is recognition of citizens, staff, and students. Uh, so we should start with the March Student of the Month. And Mr. Lewis here will do my best.
Okay, the Miami'sburg March District Student of the Month is Isla Hartman. Isla was nominated by her Jane Chance Elementary School Art, Physical Education, Music, and Technology Teachers. They said, "Isla exemplifies all PBIS expectations as a fifth grader at Jane Chance. The specific one we would like to focus on is her acts of kindness. She truly makes Jane Chance a great place to be. Isla is a crew member of Jane Chance News Network and has really been able to shine as she leads her school in announcements each day. Isla is a very creative student in technology class and puts forth effort during and outside of class to complete her projects above the level of expectations. Isla is a huge Disney fan and loves Disney movies. She is able to share her love for the characters and plots of her favorite movies through class projects. She enjoys traveling to Disney and many other locations with her family. They spend time together, playing on the beach and building strong family connections with each other. Isla steps right up to helping class to be sure all students are included, especially with group work. She touched my heart one day when she observed a student that did not have a group to work with, and she went right over and asked the student to join her and a friend without being asked. Her ability to read people and know someone's in need was amazing to watch. She's very patient and was able to reteach the skills in class to someone that was struggling on a project. Isla should be extremely proud of how she fulfills responsibilities as a student in physical education. She follows classroom expectations, is inviting and respectful to her peers, and works through her fears even when she doesn't feel like she is the best at a skill. Her perseverance will make her a force to be reckoned with as she continues her education. Isla is an excellent musician. She constantly puts forth her best effort to make the most of her talents. Last year, Isla created an amazing submission for our school talent show. Isla's hard work is always accompanied by a smile and a positive attitude. Isla is a talented visual artist whose work frequently brightens both the art room and the hallways of Jane Chance. She enjoys drawing in her spare time and often brings in artwork and has created outside of the classroom to share with friends and faculty at school. Isla always has a smile and a pleasant word for everyone and exemplifies a kind, respectful, and responsible Jane Chance student. Isla truly is the best bulldog she can be at Jane Chance. She lives her words when she leads her peers at Jane Chance in the rights and responsibilities each morning. She puts her best bark forward by always being responsible, acting with kindness, respecting others, and keeping our school safe. The Miami'sburg March District Student of the Month, Isla Hartman."
Well, Isla, um, on behalf of the Board of School Trustees, I'm going to present you with the Student of the Month medallion. And you're welcome. Can you tell us who you brought along? Any special guests tonight?
My dad, my mom, my, my two brothers, really nothing. This is your every mom, grandma, and all that.
So tell us who your favorite Disney characters.
I would say, I don't know, yes.
Do you like that? What's your favorite song from the town though?
Um, I think it's a good song.
Excellent. Well, we'll, you'll have to make sure that, uh, Sir Guyer lets us know what that is, and we'll come along, so. Congratulations. You're very welcome. And if your family would like to come up, you can get a picture with us.
I, I don't know who was smiling the most. You're your Nana.
Well, congratulations. Thanks for your appearance.
We thought it was fitting that the Jane Chance Student of the Month was this month, because it's also National Bulldog Day.
There you go. As we continue along, we shall go to Staff Appreciation Week. It is recommended that the Board of Education recognize the week of May 1st through May 7th, 2022, as Staff Appreciation Week with the following proclamation. Uh, whereas the entire Miami'sburg City School staff makes our schools an excellent place for students to learn, and whereas Miami'sburg staff works to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas the Miami'sburg staff fills many roles as listeners, role models, motivators, and mentors, and whereas the Miami'sburg staff continues to influence students in their future endeavors long after graduation, and therefore, be it resolved that the Miami'sburg Board of Education hereby proclaiming the week of May 1st through May 7th, 2022 as Staff Appreciation Week. The Miami'sburg City School District would also like to recognize the following groups and their special days. Paraprofessional Appreciation Day, what was Wednesday, April the 6th. Administrative Professional Day is uh, Wednesday, April 27th. Uh, Bus Driver Appreciation Day, Monday, May the 2nd. Uh, National School Lunch Heroes Day is Friday, May 6th, and School Nurses Day, May 11th.
Mr. Amesler, could I give a board member some recognition before we move on to board discussion?
You absolutely may.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to recognize Mr. Dale Todevine as a 15-year veteran board member. On behalf of the Ohio School Board Association and the Southwest Regional Executive Committee, I would like to extend my deepest gratitude to you for your service to public education. Serving your community through the Miami'sburg City Board of Education for the past 15 years shows tremendous dedication. Your dedication is part of the formula that makes Southwest the best. Again, thank you. Respectfully, Mark Ewing. He is the OSBA Southwest Regional Manager. And I have a certificate to present to Mr. Todevine, so congratulations.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, and here's, here's all the rest to go with it. Gee, you'll want to see that, so. And all the grandkids.
Well, buddy, I tell you what, now. Been in education 62 years now. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you again for your service, Mr. Todevine.
Well, it is uh, it is quite humbling. Staff appreciation, no matter what you do within the schools, and especially over the last two years, has uh, tested all of us at one way or the other. And uh, as we recognize these groups within our school district, it is nice to recognize everybody within the school district as well for their hard work and dedication, because uh, it's been trying, and um, Mr. Todevine, I can tell you that I've been here now nine years, and you are definitely a passionate school board member, and you, one thing you can say about Mr. Todevine is he always puts the kids first, so congratulations.
Thank you. Means a lot. He was one of my kids, if you guys out there didn't know.
Um, next we have board discussion. Uh, the community survey ends April 24th.
Right. Mrs. Lucas couldn't be with us tonight. As some of you have read in the Dayton Daily News and even the Miami'sburg News, uh, we do have a community survey, obviously for parents, also for community members, um, to take. You can find the link on our website, and it is part of our strategic plan. One of our uh, groups is um, Safety and Sense of Belonging. Mr. Guyer is actually on that committee. And so, um, we are surveying the community. It's kind of a three-part process, because we've been surveying students, we've surveyed staff, and now we're surveying our, our parents and community. So we're, we want to make sure that if everyone has not taken the survey, they have the opportunity to do so before it closes. And you can just go to the link on our website, and then we'll be sharing that information once we collect all the, the data and responses. And it will be part of our action um, planning for moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, we have the Maddox Lang presentation.
Thank you.
I am going to introduce some representatives of Maddox Lang, uh, and Ms. Erica Overstreet, who is going to talk a little bit about a really cool project that we have engaged in for the whole school year. And we have some pictures to show the really cool activities that we have done uh, in terms of recycling. And we were able to kind of finish the project about a week before spring break, so. So I'm going to let Ms. Erica talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, sir.
It was about a year ago this week, actually. I was doing a recycling unit in my classroom. We were making recycling robots, and I stumbled upon a company called Plastics Are Unique. They have a program called CAP, the CAP Program. And what they do is they get schools involved, and you collect lids and caps, and you turn them in, and you get a picnic table or a bench in return, depending on how many caps you get. So we set a goal of three hundred pounds. We started collecting in September of the school year. The whole school was involved in this. We also got, we had central office involved, family, friends. We had tons of people involved in this. The kids would bring the bags in their book bags. They would go to every classroom had a bin, and they would dump them in the bins. They got to see the lids grow. And then we would post the pictures up, and this was at the front of the building, so that they could see them as they came in. We met our goal by February of this year. We exceeded it, actually. And so this past week, over spring break, I took all of the lids up to Wadsworth, Ohio. We had a truckload. We had twenty-eight trash bags full, which was a lot to store. But we did it. They unloaded them into a very large box. They put it onto a scale right here in the weigh-in. Our goal was three hundred pounds. We met four hundred and fifty. So our, the extras were passed forward to the next group of students to do this. We chose a hexagon table, and we chose Myhamsburg colors to go with it. The CAP Program there is very educational-based, and you make a promise to them that you're going to involve all your students in this. So we did, right here, we did an investigation where we compared colors, sizes, shapes. We decided if the lid came from a bottle or a food item, corners came from a paint bottle. And then we also counted with one-one correspondence, and we made patterns. Lincoln, at the bottom left here, he made a pattern of those. And then you see Lucy counting hers as well. We have a class picture. So this week, with weather permitting, we were able to go out and utilize the picnic table. We also added these to our sensory bin, so they had a lot of hands-on experience with this. They learned about recycling and then all kinds of other things, too. And now we have a picnic table to last us for many years to come. So they grind it up, and they melt it down, and then we have a picnic table.
Thank you.
What a great contact. Good job, guys.
Erica? I'm still in the habit. When I throw a bottle away, I have that cap in my hand, and it hurts me to throw it away because we had a big bag in the kitchen that we threw all of our caps in. Thank you.
Enjoy your picnic table, boys and girls. Nice job.
Next on tonight's agenda is the consent. Next on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. A is the approval of the overnight extended student trips. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following overnight extended student trips. Myhamsburg Middle School eighth-grade DC trip. B is the approval of the out-of-state travel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the out-of-state travel. Amy Alsas, Liberty and Equity in America founding. This is in Oberholt, Nebraska. C is the approval of the Class of 2022 Early Graduates. Mr. Black, Principal at the Myhamsburg High School, has recommended that Madison Bowman Johnson, Michael McFarland, Isabella, uh... What is it? Retevide for graduation, depending on satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. D is the approval of elementary and middle school fees for 2022, 2023. It is recommended that the Board of Education establish elementary and middle school fees for the 2022, 2023 school years as follows: No increase from last year. Kindergarten through fifth grade, thirty dollars. Sixth grade through eighth grade, thirty-five dollars. Spanish is twenty-five, and French is thirty-three. E is the approval of the full-day kindergarten tuition rate. The superintendent recommends approval of the tuition rate for full-day kindergarten of three thousand for the 2022, 2023 school year for students who do not qualify for the free and reduced lunch program. F is the approval of consent items A through E. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve items A through E. May I have a motion for those items, please? I move for the approval of the consent of items A through E.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Daffler and second by Mr. Toadvine. Any comments in regards to, I know the DC trip is...
Correct. Ongoing.
It is what it is on that. Out-of-state travel, that happens occasionally for teachers that we have. Early graduates are the same, that complete their assignments. No increase from last year in regards to school fees?
Yes, that is correct.
Do you want to talk about anything in regards to the full-day kindergarten tuition rate?
Sure. This is the second year now. Will be the second year that we've been collecting. So any family that fills out their free and reduced lunch form, obviously if they're free, then their tuition is paid as well as reduced as part of the ESER funding for our Learning Recovery Plan. And then we do have families currently that are paying the three thousand, and we allow them to pay that in increments quarterly, correct? And if you equate that, it's like three hundred a month during the ten months we have school for their child to attend school all day. So, yeah, and no changes to that cost.
Okay. Any questions or comments in regards to the consent agenda from anyone? Hearing none, may I have a roll call? Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amslor? Yes. Next is new business. The approval of resolution of necessity for substitute tax levy. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution declaring an intent to proceed with election of the question of substitution of emergency tax levy and renewal of a substitute levy.
I do have a short presentation.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
I move for the approval of resolution of necessity for a substitute tax levy.
Motion by? I second. Mr. Lewis and seconded by Mr. Daffler. Mr. Espy?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a brief update on what this resolution is and what it allows the school district to do. As we look at what this is, this is essentially step one in being able to put a levy on the ballot in November. Assuming that this would be approved, then I would be able to certify to the county auditor and then receive some information back to be able to bring in an additional resolution to you next month. When we look at levy types, we currently have an emergency levy and a substitute levy. So the emergency levy is a fixed dollar amount levy. Typically, people think that these are like, emergency needs to be passed very quickly. It's really, I don't know why they've called it an emergency levy. It's really just a fixed dollar levy. So I really want to drive that point home. It can be between one and five years, and it can be renewed. It's important to note that the millage is adjusted up and down each year to collect a set amount of income revenue via property taxes. A substitute levy is essentially something, when an emergency levy is renewed, and it can become a substitute. The difference with a substitute is there can be additional revenue coming in if it's for new builds. So essentially, it allows the district to receive the income for new construction that occurs. Also, it can go between one and ten years, and again, it's a fixed dollar amount. And both the emergency and the substitute are for day-to-day operating. The operating levy has a set millage, and that is, allows the reduction factor to come into place. Typically, when districts are on the twenty-mill floor like we are, if you add, if you were to add an operating levy, it would typically take more millage, more taxing, to be able to achieve a certain level of income. So it's important to note that how all of these play together. We currently have an emergency and a substitute. What this resolution would do would combine those two levies into a single issue. There would be a renewal at no increase. I did want to talk about the tax rates specifically within the county. So when we look at this...
Can I interrupt you one second?
Yes.
Are you going to mention the money that is going to be saved by the taxpayer from our refunding?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'll get there. We'll certainly get there. I have another slide where I'm going to come back to that. But as we look at the tax rates here, you can see when we count, first of all, if we were to bring out the emergency and the substitute levy, Myhamsburg has the lowest millage in the county. We're at the twenty-mill floor. We're the only district that is sitting at the twenty-mill floor. Consequently, even when you add in the emergency and substitute, we're still the fifth lowest. So I think that that's an interesting data point to look at when you're talking about tax rates of the county. What this means is we have an emergency and a substitute levy. The emergency is for six point seven five, six point seven seven five million, and a substitute of seven point two two five million. These would be combined into a substitute continuing levy that would be a total of fourteen million. And again, this would not be any increase in the fixed dollar rate that we would be collecting. The only change would be that it would be a continuing levy. Also, as Mr. Toadvine pointed out, we, through the bond refunding, were able to shave a year off, and through that year off, also reduce that burden on the taxpayer through essentially a refunding. And that's already been put in place. So I wanted to come back and look at the importance of property tax and how it plays a part in our revenue. When we look at fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, it's over thirty point two million of the revenue. And when you stack it up and you look at how that is in relation to the other revenue that we have, it's by far the largest portion of our revenue as a school district. That's represented in the blue. The green being the next, which is the unrestricted state income. I also wanted to point out, due to timing, I'm only able to show you the six point seven five, six point seven seven five portion of the emergency impact, or the emergency levy, and how that impacts and how it stacks up and visually represents our revenue. But if we were to add one more year on this, we would see that pink section at the top would represent fourteen million. And so that's a substantial portion of our tax revenue that comes from taxpayers. So are there any questions on exactly what we're doing here? I know it's going to look like a single issue, but really it's combining two issues, creating it into a substitute fixed dollar amount that is no increase in collections and no different than what we're getting. The only thing that it allows us to do is get continuing status on that.
Which means we wouldn't have to vote again on it, correct?
Correct. So these levies go back, you know, ten years. Some, one is ten years, one's even before that, and they've been renewed and renewed and renewed. And now what we're able to do is get them in continuing status to where they wouldn't have to go back to the ballot.
You might point out, too, that every renewal that we've ever had, ever, as long as I can remember, the people of Myhamsburg has been very gracious, and every one of them has passed. And I still want to make sure on the refunding that we let people know that refunding means it's a refinance. And that Mr. Espy jumped right on that and got a super rate for us. And he basically refinanced our biggest bond issue that we've ever had in Myhamsburg in saving lots and lots of money to the taxpayers. The school's not realizing any of that money, folks. It's going back into the pockets of the taxpayers. And I'm going to hit on that every chance I get because I think that's huge. It really is. It means something to me because I'm a school district taxpayer, and everybody in this room that's a taxpayer for the school district. It's a big deal. So we're looking pretty good as far as that goes. I mean, I don't know, when I say it looks pretty good, maybe I would change that. It helps a lot to allow people to get some money back on their taxes, so. Okay, I'm sorry.
Very good points. Any other questions?
Hearing Mr. Espy, we have a roll call. Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amslor?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the Human Resources Agenda Items. A is the approval of the personnel reports certificated and classified. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Also, and B is the approval of the personnel report supplemental stipend certificated and classified. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report supplemental stipend certificated and classified. Employment within the Myhamsburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with the adopted board policies. C is the approval of administrative contract renewals. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following administrative contract renewals. This is Michelle Reed for Transportation Supervisor, and it's a three-year contract. D is the approval of the Human Resources Items. A and through C, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve items A Alpha through C Charlie. May I have a motion for those three items, please? I move for the approval of Human Resources Items A through C.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Daffler and seconded by Mr. Lewis. Mr. Holman.
Nothing out of the ordinary for the personnel reports in the uh, Michelle's contract was. It's a corrected one from last month, so. But business as usual.
And I'd like just, I, I'm talking a lot tonight, I know, but I can't help. There's some things on here that I, I really think are important. Michelle uh Reed, who's the Transportation Supervisor. I've heard so many wonderful things about her from the school bus drivers and stuff over the amount of time that she's been here and I just wanna. Put a feather in her cap for it to thank her.
Anything else? Alright. I know, I'm not talking them tonight, right?
Freeze can turn that Michael.
Uh, hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Mister Amsler?
Yes.
Mister Daffler?
Yes.
Mister Lewis?
Yes.
Mister Toz.
Yes.
Six is the agreements and contracts. A is the approval of the agreement with uh Chapel. Romanoff and Technologies LLC. It is recommended to Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent. Director of Human Resources Treasurer CFO enter into a contract with Chapel Romanoff Technologies LLC. For Miami'sburg High School Intercom and Clock Replacement. B is the approval agreement with Apetee. Uh, it is recommended that the Superintendent Treasurer CFO enter, enter into a five-year agreement with. Uh, Apetee uh for mobile app and web development. C is the approval agreement with Mobile Health and Services LLC. It is recommended that by the Superintendent and Director of Business Services. To enter into an agreement with Mobile Health uh Services LLC. D is the approval authorizing the purchase of school buses. It is recommended by the Superintendent and Director of Business that the school body, no. The bus body chassis bid conducted by the Miami'sburg City Schools specifications be awarded to Rush Truck Center. This award is for three seventy-two passenger school buses and one special need school bus. The total amount is three hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. The school bus grant pays for one hundred and eighty thousand and the district will pay the remaining balance. E is the approval agreement with Forward Edge Incorporated. It is recommendation of the Superintendent and Treasurer CFO that the uh Board approve an agreement with Forward Edge Incorporated. F is the approval agreement between Miami'sburg City Schools and the Wright State University. The Superintendent recommends approval of the agreement with Wright State University. To provide Wright State University candidates enrolled in social work and teacher education, human services, kineology. Health, leadership studies and education and organizations, nursing, professional psychology. Teaching or leadership experience for teacher candidates and leadership students and school counseling experience. For its school counseling candidates enrolled in these programs. This agreement will be ineffective from August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two through August sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, G is the approval agreement with frontline education support. Superintendent and Treasurer CFO recommend approval of attached annual agreement with frontline educational support. H, approval of agreement with Capital Aluminum Glass Corporation. It is a recommendation by the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Director of Business. To approve an agreement with Capital Aluminum Glass Corporation for replacement doors at Bauer and Mark Twain Elementary Schools. I is the approval agreement with Rural Excavating Incorporated. It is recommended by the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Director of Business to approve an agreement with Rural Excavating Incorporated. For work to be completed at Bear Elementary School and the Transportation Department. J, J is the approval agreement with, with contract items A Alpha. Uh, through I. Uh, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve these items in the contracts. Um, may I have a motion for this? I'll move for the approval of the agreements in contracts.
I second.
Motion by Mister Lewis, second by Mister Daffler. Mister Homan, does this go a lot to you?
Probably seventy-five percent.
Okay.
We'll, we'll share, we'll share the stuff here. So um. So contract A is the replacement of the intercom system at the high school and the clock replacement. So we still have original parts from when uh the high school was first up. Uh, built up there and then through all the various phases and renovations. Um, it's been kinda pieced and milled together. And so we're getting to the point where. A lot of those pieces and components are not doing very well. They're starting to fail.
Fifty years old.
So we're, you know, we, we, we have uh done well to get through this far, but we're, we're to the point now where we kinda have to. Uh, make those because as we keep replacing parts. It's getting more and more expensive and by the time you keep replacing them, it's, you're beyond what it's, the value is, so. And this will also include, we decided to um. Andy and, and Doug Shade and Stacy have spent a lot of time. Um, working through various contractors, various vendors, getting different quotes to get the best. You know, bang for our buck in terms we go for there, so. And the clock system, if you've ever been at the high school, it's been slowly kind of dying as they go through. Um. So this will be new, new clocks, new speakers um as we go through that, so. And so um just as a reminder, you know, um John's done a great job to really talk about our finances and where those finances come from. So this contract here is being paid out of the permanent improvement money. It's, it's not. General fund money. It is not the day-to-day operations money. Um, it's that permanent improvement money where he, he talked about up there. It's used for building improvements. The roofs, the buses, um furniture, all those things. So once again, as we go through it, that's a different pot of money in terms of that. Um, like you wanna do B?
Sure, I will talk about Apogee. Um, as part of our strategic plan, we, we talked about a survey earlier this evening. Um, Apogee is a web um based. It's going to replace OneCall. So if some of you are familiar with OneCall, um it does have the ability to send a text message. Um, a voicemail or a voice activated message as well as an email. Um, Apogee has a little bit more. Um, in, intuitive and more technology-based ways to communicate. Um, it is an app, so we will have a Miami'sburg City Schools app um that will be able to do push out um messages. Uh, it'll push out announcements, it'll push out emails. It can also even push out phone calls, automated calls. It can also sync with a website. So we will be um upgrading our website, which I don't believe has been done for quite a while. So we'll be integrating um that use of technology that the software provides. So that we will have seamless, basically a one-click, any type of information we put out on one platform can go to all of those platforms. Um, and it'll be real-time notifications. Sometimes with. OneCall, it can be an antiquated system where maybe Tracy gets her one call and then twenty minutes later. You know, Kelly would get her one call and then Sarah might get it thirty minutes later. So this would be um, like I said, real-time. And it, it also provides a safe platform for students and staff members to communicate. Um, we all know how important texting is and how quick and easy it is. So that this would be a safe place for staff members to send text messages to students. It would be monitored. And students can communicate as well as families without any staff member having to use their own personal. Um, phone numbers or emails. So it's going to be a really um integrated system. I think it'll be. Be able to provide a lot more information and transparency to our, our community and our stakeholders. And then again, that, that our website is, the, OneCall and our website weren't really connected. All of it will be connected. And as Mister Homan mentioned, our OneCall is, is funded through the general fund. But then our website is a more technology-based, which sometimes is, is paid for by our PI funds. So we're bas- bas- making sure that we're replacing some services. And also having a five-year contract reduces the risk of our prices to go up. Um, as we, as Mister Espy talked about. So um that is our recommendation for Apogee. Um, we, we had different presenters come in and speak with many of our stakeholders about different options and what would be best for them.
So on uh letter C, the approval of agreement with Mobile Health Services. Um, one of the things that we do each year, um as John has talked about, we, we are continually shopping our contracts. For who we go um out to. So currently, um, we were using, um, it was called Excel. And then Premier brought Excel out um from Middletown and they would do our pre-employment drug screenings. Um, our randoms for transportation, our transportation physicals and all that. And so um as we kinda do each year, we've gone out, gone out shopping and um. We've been meeting um with a local vendor um out here in Washington Township, uh Mobile Health Services. They've been slowly. Um, basically really working with our transportation departments and doing onsite physicals. Um, where they would come onsite. One of, one of the reasons that we had gone to Excel. Several years ago was the fact that they would come onto our sites at the end of the school year. Drivers could come down to wherever, get their physicals done. They would also come out and do the random sampling, which we have to do by um O, O dot uh regulations. Um, and so over the years, that's kind of changed and, and one of the other reasons that this is very um appealing to us is that. Um, our pre-employment screenings um will save us some significant amount of money. And also um our bus driver physicals as well. So they're local. The other nice thing is they have expanded hours into the evening. Um, so if we would have to um get any things done in the evening or those that are pre-employment have a different job now. They, they can go over there in the evening, whereas before. They changed their hours recently. They closed at four. So those that needed to get something done, they, they weren't able to do that, so. It, it's a win-win for everyone and um I do believe almost all of our neighboring transportation school departments have now switched to them. And they have excellent um customer service. So we've, we've done our due diligence and, and looked at all those various things, so. It's another way that we're trying to save our community money and get, and get more bang for our buck. Uh, item D, the approval of the uh school bus purchases. Um, John did a real nice job in his presentation talking about. Um, how we always continually go out, seek for grants and be able to pay for things. So uh we applied for the grant, were able to get it. Um, as John said, we're basically getting two buses for the price of four. Um, in terms of that. Um, also this kind of goes into, oh. Oh, yeah.
We're getting four for the.
Yeah, we'll get four for the price of two. Yeah, good. See, see, John, that's why you work with the numbers, you know? Um, so we will uh, this is also part of, as John um. Talked about before, part of our capital improvement plan. We have been working with OSBA on a vehicle replacement plan as well. So between um the four we have here and the three we ordered earlier, we have a nice start on to our cycle of, of rotation of vehicles for that. See Forward Edge.
Stacy, do you wanna share that contract or? Just for computers, right? For, is that our high school lab?
There's two. One is the high school.
So again. We do the high school labs and our, in technology, we have the buildings on rotations. The high school labs are on different rotations. Because doing all the years of the high school at the same time. So this we have, this is for lab four twelve. I believe in the high school, which is our digital technology and our digital art and our graphic design. So just upgrading her equipment to support the software that she uses. Um, we did have. A different lab that was up for upgrade this year, but we're not replacing that lab due to the C P C program. We don't have to replace the computers in that lab, so we were able to move this one up and you're gonna hear in the future that we're able to move some of our rotations up. Thanks to the grant for Chromebooks and we're able to bump some of our rotations up a year or so. So we're getting some more better equipment in our works. And again, this is about PI funds.
Letter F is, is uh pretty much an annual agreement that we'll be starting to get more of these in as we move into next school year. Um, we now have to have agreements in place for all the universities for field experience student teachers, so. You'll be seeing more of those come through. Um, since you talk about G two. That's you.
G is a, a contract with frontline, which is formerly, formerly known as Forecast Five, so. This is essentially all of the analytics that we're able to utilize and pull in. Graphics to tell the district story fairly quickly and also track our expenditures and revenues. Uh, and also just reporting as well, so that's. Uh, this is actually allowing us to save an annual increase of five percent by locking in a, a multi-year deal.
Uh, letter F, the uh with Capital Aluminum Glass Corporation. Um, they are, we have a couple um as we've gone through, you know, within our five-year capital plan, identifying areas that need replacements. We're gonna replace. Um, two sets of doors over at Mark Twain. Um, that need to um be replaced over there and then also set of doors over at Bauer. As well that need to be um replaced over there. In capital, um they have done um other work for us. In the district, they're gonna be doing our Bauer replacement windows. Um, over there that we um are funding through Esther Grant money in terms of that. And then also they did um the memorial front doors. Um, the same company did that, so very good workmanship and all that and um. They're very easy to work with their schedules. I. Uh, the agreement with Rural Excavating. Um, so part of this is, is we go through there, we have some um repairs that we need to do over on the bear. Um, asphalt over there. And then the other portion of this, as we've talked about, um as part of our capital improvement, um planning. The transportation lot to start working on that, so. Um, this part gets us, a section of the transportation lot uh completed. That is the original asphalt. Over in the transportation um compound over there. And then the other portion of this, what we would like to do is to do a little expansion. Um, about a hundred feet out, twenty-five feet out, where we can now park. The vans separate from the buses, food trucks, vehicles, trucks, all those types of things. So we're not trying to, if you've ever been over there right now, it's, it's. It's, it's bumper to bumper, fence to fence, middle of the lot, all that. So this kinda gives us. Separate parking spots over there. And then part of this would be taking the, the cur- when you first go into the compound. The left side, there were the fences there and then you have the apartments. That fence will then go all the way over to the tree line. Where our property ends. We're gonna go ahead and fence that in now, cuz it's gonna be this. If we don't fence that whole thing in now, then we're gonna have to take down the fence. We'll eventually expand and spend more money. Do that, but then they'll be able to work all within um those confines of that fence, so. So that fence will be all the way over to the left and then we'll have a section there for parking um in terms of those, so. It'll be a busy summer with everything going on, so. And I think, I think we've gone through all the letters of the alphabet for me, so.
Pretty close. Anything else? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Mister Toadvine?
Yes.
Mister Amsler?
Yes.
Mister Daffler?
Yes.
Mister Lewis?
Yes.
Seven is a financial agenda items. A is the approval of transfers. Uh, the Treasurer CFO recommends that the Board of Education approve the following transfers. These transfers are for school fees waived during January through March twenty twenty-two. All transfers are made in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code fifty-seven oh five point one four. B is the approval of then, then and now invoices. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the Board of Education approve the then and now invoices. Uh, as presented. C is the authorization for amendment to the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO in the appropriations and cert- certificate of estimated resources to be amended as listed in the attached reports. And D is the approval of the financial items A through C. May I have a motion? May I have a motion for items A through C in the financial?
I move that we approve the financial items A through C.
Uh, motion by Mr. Toadvine?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Uh, Mr. Espy?
Yes, so the transfers are going to be, um, to basically fund the student fee accounts, um, for those students that are receiving free and reduced lunch. Uh, typically we move that, those monies over to be able to, um, buy the supplies and, and, and allow those purchases to be made. When we look at letter B for then and now invoices, we were having issues with our, um, sourcing some of our fuel. Uh, and it caused some, us, uh, us to have to, uh, spend more with a vendor we did not expect to spend, uh, with. And that created a, a then and now, so we're just asking for your approval for that. We obviously had to put fuel in the buses to get the kids to school. So, uh, it's a, uh, uh, obviously worthy cause. Um, and then we, when we look at letter C, uh, now that we have the detail with the fu- uh, fair school funding plan, the main changes, I, you know, I bring these to you every month, but the main changes here that we, uh, were able to dial in the expenditures in the general fund and also the revenues now that we have the detail of what exactly we're going to be getting. And so that's all.
Any questions in regards to the financial items, A through C? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes. Eight is the acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's O-eighteen account unless indicated otherwise. Five thousand dollars from anonymous to the Miami'sburg City School District for implementation of the preschool promise, MVCDC preschool classroom. Three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents to Jane Chance Elementary School. PTA to Jane Chance Elementary School for the purchase of recycling bins. Two hundred and fifty-two dollars ninety-seven cents and first grade field trip transportation costs of a hundred and five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Fifteen hundred dollars from Mark Twain PTA to Mark Twain Elementary School for the purchase of Gaga Pit. Uh, a story in Clark Update Piano from Bob Royer of BHA Piano Center valued at two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to Jane Chance Elementary School. Office supplies from Stephanie Elswick and Venture Real Estate Group valued at two thousand dollars to Jane Chance Elementary School. And two thousand dollars from the Miami'sburg Rotary to the Miami'sburg Schools Community Connections Program at one thousand dollars and destination, one thousand dollars. May I have a motion for the acceptance of donations?
I'll move for the acceptance of donations.
Mr. Lewis made the motion?
Second.
And Mr. Toadvine accepted it. And I will say thank you again to all the donations. Any donation is good and, uh, they're always appreciated. So thank you very much. Anybody else would like to say anything in regards to the donations? Much appreciated. Uh, hearing none, and Mr. Espy may have a roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Now we come down to report and I don't believe, we don't have Mr. Izakovich, correct? So next week, next month's Miami Ballet Career Technology will probably be delivered by Mr. Izakovich because he's not here this evening. So, uh, next we will go on to the legislative, uh, liaison, Mr. Corey Daffler.
Uh, a few things. Governor Roe Einste signed a House Bill five ninety-seven, which provides capital reparations, including approximately four hundred and forty-two point eight million for local school constructions through the Ohio Facility Construction Commission. Uh, then there's a few things sitting on his desk for his approval. House Bill ninety-five, one twenty-six, incentive bill one thirty-five. Uh, we've talked about House Bill one twenty-six here quite a bit. Uh, it's not really in the favor of the local school districts. This bill would limit the school district's ability to protect its tax base through the Board of Revision Process. Um, the General Assembly sent the House Bill ninety-five to Governor DeWine. This bill appropriates three hundred and thirty-eight million in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two to the federal school lunch program. And I crossed out one thirty-five, so we must not need to talk about that. And then once again, the Ohio Supreme, uh, Court has ruled against the, um, redistricting commission's, uh, map. I find this to be very inconvenient and a shame that we can't, uh, get a district map for the upcoming elections. It's very sad. That's all I got.
Thanks, Corey. Next we have our student achievement liaison, Mr. Tim Lewis.
Okay, earlier we, um, honored Isla Hartman for our district student of the month. Our, um, other building student of the month representatives include from Bauer Elementary School, Lillian Baylor. From Bear Elementary School, Nick Guyman. From Kinder Elementary School, Thomas Lewis, also known as Tommy Buckets. I gotta say that, I'm sorry. Mark Twain Elementary School, Michaela Owen. Medlarview Elementary, Ibrahim Al Tarhuni from Mound. Noor Kualla, Miami'sburg Middle School, Jeanette Uza Ma Kunda. And from Miami'sburg High School, Ashlyn Bailey.
Thanks, Mr. Lewis. Next is the Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition liaison, Mr. Dale Toadvine.
I'd like to congratulate Mr. Lewis for great pronunciation. Um, the, the Coalition will meet, uh, next month and I will have a report next month. Um, this month was kind of skipped. Uh, but there was one thing that was discussed, uh, among some of the, uh, members. And that was just that the, uh, death rates are going up, uh, pretty steeply for, um, drug deaths right now. So please keep that in mind.
I will concur with you, Mr. Toadvine. They are going back up. Unfortunately. Uh, next is, uh, district news and information. The latest making a difference honoree is Bauer Elementary School building sub, Mr. John Grayman. John was nominated by Michelle Groleski. John is known as Mr. G in the building. And he is also known as Superman, the Bauer B in any character that matches, uh, their special days out at Bauer. He greets the students and parents, uh, in the car ride or line every morning with a smile on his face. And if it's a special day, it costs him to go along with that smile. He helps everyone start their day in a positive way. His full nomination can be read on the district website at the Miami'sburg City School, uh, schools dot org. The following nine seniors at Miami'sburg High School have been made their decision to continue their academic and athletic careers at the next level. Best wishes to Emily Berger, Miami University of Middletown Volleyball. Uh, Lucas, uh, Clooney, University of Finley Swimming. Anthony Kopic, Otterbourne University Basketball. Addison Frymore, Concord University Basketball. Thomas Montig, Whitten U- Whittenburg University Football. Brock Stevens, Ohio Northern University Football. Riley Stegamoyer, Edison State Community College Softball. Amelia Wilson, Ursuline College Soccer. And Lenisa Wilson, Xavier University Track and Field. So congratulations to all those nine seniors, not only doing it academically, but athletically as well. So that's always a good thing. Next is Mr. Comments, starting off by Mr. Daffler.
Um, just want to say thanks for all the hard work everybody does. We're getting close to the end of the school year. I know on my calendar, the boys have it as, I think, twenty-three days left. So, uh, get through the rest of the year and, um, want to also, I'm new to this. And, you know, the PI fund and the general fund, that's all very confusing. It's just, it would be good for everybody to try to learn as much as they can about the different pots of money and how money is spent. So that is very confusing. That's all I got.
I said enough.
Did he turn it off?
Um, I wanted to thank Michael Black, the high school staff and students for their fantastic Fridays. I look forward to seeing what they're doing every week. Um, all of the activities. It, um, they choose activities that kind of force the students to collaborate and offer a lot of real-world experiences. Um, things like the development of social skills and other social concepts, uh, taking strides for prevention with child abuse. And it's all kinds of different activities. But, uh, like I said, I look forward to seeing what they do each week. Um, wanted to thank John Espy and the treasurer staff for, um, putting together presentations. Great job explaining our financial situation, levy information, making it easy for everyone to understand. And thank you to Maddox Lang and Erica Overstreet. I believe she pretty much took that on, didn't she? Yeah, it's, um, always great seeing little ones in here. But teaching the young students the value of recycling and enjoyed seeing that.
I will be brief as well. Um, I won't be here next month. I will be in Alabama for the next school board meeting and graduation. So I just wanted to say congratulations to our seniors. I just realized tonight I was going to be out of town during that timeframe. Um, so, but, um, quite an accomplishment to all of our seniors. And, um, I know we've got multiple recognitions for different, um, groups within the school district. But it is, um, worth noting, um, that over the past two years, it has been a trying year for all of us. Uh, and, uh, I just wanted to pass my, uh, thank yous to everyone. And, um, hopefully, as we come out of it, not only have we learned different ways of doing things, um, but, uh, we continue to strive forward to put our students first. So with that, I'll move on to Mr. Espy.
Yeah, well, like, that three minutes really was brief for you. I think I've talked enough tonight too, but I do want to say thank you to the entire team, and I mean everyone. Um, you know, it, it's really a team effort to be able to, um, do what we do every day. And I, and I just want to say thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Espy. Uh, just some upcoming events. Uh, prom is tomorrow evening at the Dayton Masonic Temple, so I'll be attending. I'm looking forward to seeing all, all of our students all cleaned up and fancy, so that's exciting. Uh, the, uh, on Monday, we have a boardwork session at six o'clock at Memorial, so hoping you all can make that.
I will be there for that.
Okay, good.
I won't be out of town yet.
I think we're going to be talking about some financial items and some enrollment updates and planning for next year. And then on Wednesday evening at the Plaza Theater, you are all invited to join me in watching Parent Trap from the nineteen sixty-one original version. So it is Plaza Theater Celebrity Evening. So I would love for all the Miami'sburg students and families to join us. Um, seven o'clock, admission is five dollars. They will have concessions. And we have a special gift for each student who attends as they leave.
What's the date in that?
Wednesday evening, April twenty-seventh, seven o'clock. Can you make that one?
Seven?
Seven.
Seven?
Seven o'clock. We have to have it early.
Might be off the golf course by then, maybe.
Well, hopefully you can stop by. And, um, thank all of our administrators, uh, for here this evening, especially, um, Mrs. Bezek and her, her lovely little, um, preschoolers. That was fun. And, um, Mrs. Bezek had the cool critters out right before, uh, spring break. And that was so fun to see all the cool creatures and get to pet them. So thank you for including us. And I know it was touch a truck today, right? Exciting things going on, so, so thank you. And, um, graduation we do have coming up on May twenty-first. Uh, we do have a tentative date in the morning at ten on that Saturday. But of course, if the weather doesn't cooperate, we might have to push it back to Saturday evening or Sunday morning. So we're hoping for, that's, um, Spring Fest in the Berg as well. So it'll be a busy weekend, so hopefully we can get it done at ten o'clock on Saturday. So we'll let you know, Chris.
Thank you.
And, um, thank the board. We, we do appreciate your support. Um, I know the staff and, um, all of us, even at central office, appreciate, um, all you do to support us and help us do the good work that we, um, we all enjoy. So, and I, I heard there's five more Mondays, Mr. Daffler, according to, um, some of the staff and students I've run into this week. Mr. Homan, it's all yours.
All right. Um, just a couple, um, things here real quick. We, we did talk about Staff Appreciation Month. And I think it's really important, um, that our community knows how much our, our staff does for our students. And, and, um, we talk about, um, a family and a caring family. And it doesn't matter, um, what position you hold in the district. We're all here for, for one purpose, and that's for helping and supporting our students. So, um, you know, from the bottom of my heart to everyone, um, it, it's a Miami'sburg family here. And, and thank you to all of our staff in the district for everything you do for our students every single day. It, it's greatly appreciated. And then, um, I think by the time we get here, uh, some of our, uh, spring season, or spring sports season will be winding down by the time we get here in May. So, um, I want to wish them, um, good luck as they go into some tournament seasons. Um, we have some, um, that have wound down. Um, our, our World Guard did a fabulous job placing, um, um, in, in the nation in terms of that. So we are extremely proud of them for that. Um, I do believe we have, uh, wins finishes up this weekend as well, their season. They've had a very successful season as well, so. And then by the time, I mean, next time, we'll be, we'll be getting all ready for graduation in the end of the year. And, and all of you can give me more anxiety when you keep telling me that summer's almost here and trying to get the projects in. So, you know, keep doing that, so. But we're off, uh, I think we'll be good for projects. We've been, uh, meeting on a regular basis for all of our contractors to make sure we're on set, on schedule and all that. And, um, Rich Baker's done a great job, especially with the, uh, projector board meeting with all, um, the staffs. They're having, um, whether it's a baitment or a new boards, let them know what they need to be done, when they need to be out and all that. So we tried to really make sure the communication is out there and staff's prepared and ready to go. That's it.
I had to write myself a note for Monday night. Six PM, right?
Correct. Dinner will be provided.
Uh, anything else? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Daffler?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Um, roll call.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.